So the only thing is that you're supposed to go up to the.
Okay.
For all of them or just that one?
No, no, just that one. So when you get to that one, just let him know?
He's got to move himself from the table.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, he's just got to move away from the table. Okay?
I thought it was B. He was in conflict.
Yeah, but just, we're gonna go, he's gonna, we're gonna go with the.
Okay, makes sense. All right, CL application one six three four zero one, twenty five Montagnus Road. The CPD Committee recommends council provide no objection to Crown Land's application one six three four oh one, located at twenty five Montagnus Road, on the condition that future development.
Hold on, hold on. That's the one he's in conflict with?
That's what I'm.
Yeah, so do A, then he's gonna step away from B.
So I'm presenting A as well?
Yeah, you're gonna do the whole works.
Oh, I didn't know. I only had B.
Yeah, we'll do A, yeah.
Okay, we'll start from the beginning. CL application one six three two four five. O and M Holdings. The CPD Committee recommends council provide no objection to Crown Land's application one six three two four five, located at thirty five to thirty seven Aspen Road, on the condition that future development complies with the town's development regulations.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Wallace, CPD Committee.
Just a point. So you're not in a conflict with that one, so why wouldn't you present that?
Yeah, I was just, this is the way I just did it. So he'll step out for the next one, and then he can do the rest of it. Yep. Okay, so moved by Deputy Mayor Wallace and CPD Committee that council recommends provide no objection to Crown Land's application one six three two four five, for thirty five to thirty seven Aspen Road. Seconded by Counselor Brumfield. Discussion?
Just, just for purpose of, well, nobody's listening. Well, then again, I don't know, we're on now, are we live now?
Okay, we're live.
We're live. So, but anyway, that's the piece of Crown Land off Aspen, initially they had applied for land that went much further back than what we're actually approving.
We're lining this piece up.
We're lining up with other properties within the same area.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Just a quick question. He's read on? Okay, well then I'll move the microphone closer. I wish I'd known that, though. All right, okay, so you're in conflict with.
This one is a conflict.
Yeah, I didn't know. So if we could use the microphones closer, just for. All right, so I have the record, the minutes indicate that Counselor Winters is clear conflict, and he's removing himself from the discussion. All right, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. CL application one six three four zero one, twenty five Montagnus Road. The CPD Committee recommends council provide no objection to Crown Land's application one six three four zero one, located at twenty five Montagnus Road, on the condition that future development complies with the town's development regulations.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Wallace and the CPD Committee that council provide no objection, or recommend no objection, to Crown Land's application one six three four oh one at twenty five Montagnus Road. Seconded by? Okay, Counselor Palmeroy, discussion? None being heard. All those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Country-minded? Passed. Thank you. Do you want to continue more, or do you want Deputy Mayor to continue? You're good? Okay. And just to, I'm not sure what time we picked up into the meeting. Counselor Compton-Hobbs has passed regrets from this evening's meeting, and Counselor Rumbold is joining the meeting by telephone. Deputy Mayor, number three, or letter C.
Thank you. CL application one six three four zero three, N L Hydro. The CPD Committee recommends council provide no objection to Crown Land's application one six three four zero three, located behind two twelve Kellon Drive, on the condition that future development complies with the town's development regulations, and the width is reduced to five point five meters.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Wallace and the CPD Committee recommends that council provide no objection to Crown Land's application one six three four zero three at behind two twelve Kellon Drive. Seconded by Counselor Brumfield. Discussion? None heard. All those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Country-minded? Passed. All right, last one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Variance land use six Green Street. The CPD Committee recommends council approve the application. Can I say his name?
Uh, yeah.
From Lawrence Barry for a three point eight percent variance in minimum building line setback, subject to compliance with all town regulations and conditions.
Yep. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Wallace and the CPD Committee that the council approve an application from Lawrence Barry for a three point eight percent variance in a minimum building setbacks at the property at six Green Street. Seconded by? Counselor Winters, discussion? Okay, none heard. All those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. All right, so that's the end of your recommendations. All right, moving next into the next committee, Community Services and Recreation. And we'll pass the chair over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Community Service and Recreation Committee report January twenty twenty five meeting was scheduled as committee, as part of the Committee of the Hall on Tuesday, January twenty fourteenth, twenty twenty four, twenty five, at five thirty P M. Mayor Andrews called the Committee of the Hall meeting to order at five fifteen. Community Services and Recreation was the second department to report. Present were Chair, Counselor Todd Winters, Deputy Mayor Wallace, Counselor Jackie Compton-Hobbs, Ex officio Mayor George Andrews, C A O Nadine McCauley, and E A Kathy Eddy. Regrets was the CSR Director, Tom DeMares. We had the approval of agenda, there were no additions. Presentations and delegations, there were none. We reviewed the previous minutes and action items, there were no errors and omissions. Actions item update were reviewed. There was one update with a meeting with the Curling Club to be scheduled by the C A O for late January. There was no new business. Other business discussion information, skating loop was discussed at Haciuparque and was being worked on at the time of the meeting, and from my understanding, that is ready to go and is available to the public. Managers report, key updates coming. February fourteenth to sixteenth is the Lake Melville Minor Hockey Association Mega Tournament. From February twenty first and twenty third are the tentative dates for the Winter Carnival. April fifth to the sixth is the Snowflake Figure Skating Club Ice Show. June nineteenth is the last day of soccer, and June twenty fourth to twenty sixth was Expo Labrador. Next meeting, next meeting is the Committee of the Hall is scheduled for February Tuesday, February eleventh at five P M. Adjournment, there being no further discussion, the meeting adjourned at six fifty four P M. Please accept report as presented.
Okay, moved by Counselor Winters that we accept the Community Services and Recreation Report as presented. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Discussion? Okay, none heard. All those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Country-minded? Passed. And you have no recommendations, correct?
No recommendations.
Okay. All right. Okay, move on to finance and minimum policy.
Okay, your worship. The Finance Administration Policy met as part of the Committee of the Hall on Tuesday, January fourteenth, at five fifteen. Present was myself and the Chair, Counselor Hayward Brumfield, Deputy Mayor Ella Wallace, and Counselor Bert Palmeroy, Ex officio Mayor Andrews. The staff present were C A O Nadine McCauley, D F O Mike Dolma, S A T Valerie Pye, and Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy. There were no delegates, and we only had two, one item really. We reviewed the previous minutes and action items. There are no errors and omissions noted, but we did discuss one item, which is really a part of the new business for this week. And it was requested to write off a business tax for a local business that's no longer operating. But before we did that, we decided we'd try some more avenues and directed the committee or the staff to go back and try some new ways to contact the previous owners, because the old mail has been returned today by the post office. So we directed them to try some new ways to contact them as we thought as we were discussing it. And as well, since then, I also reviewed the information that was provided. And since then, I've realized that there's been a mistake made on the balance of showing, and I will discuss that at the next committee meeting with the staff there, by the next committee meeting. And that, that was the end of our discussions, and like I said, there was a short meeting, and there was no new business, and we adjourned at roughly five thirty.
All right, thank you, Counselor Brumfield. It's moved by Counselor Brumfield and the F A P Finance Minimum Policy Committee that we accept the report as presented. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Discussion? None being heard. No discussions, right? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Country-minded? Passed. Do you have recommendations, sir?
No recommendations.
I think you've checked, yeah, you've got one, yeah.
Last minute story.
Yeah.
Okay. So the first one would be the checks?
No, 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 this.
There is a motion, a motion.
There's a recommendation or.
Letter of support?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, letter of support for the Labrador North Chamber of Commerce. The Finance Administration Policy Committee recommends council offer support to the Labrador North Chamber of Commerce on its Labor Market Partnership Program application for a business liaison office to assist the region to prepare for the major developments associated with the new operational contract.
Okay, it's moved by Counselor Brumfield and the F A P Committee that we support this letter from the Labrador North, letter of support to the Labrador North Chamber of Commerce. Seconded by, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Discussion? Counselor Palmeroy?
I'm just wondering why this would be presented in form of motion. Like, wouldn't we provide support to the chamber anyway, in terms of a letter of support for business opportunities?
My understanding is, I guess.
Or have we got to have a?
Well, my understanding is that it's supposed, letters of support are supposed to come from a council, because it, it needs to be a council decision, not a.
So if you support anything, you gotta.
No, but thi- this is for a formal application process that they're going through for.
Okay, they need, they need a motion.
They need a letter of support.
Okay, okay.
That's all right.
The Chamber didn't need motion support, but according to the potential fares, any letters of support as written by the council needs a motion of cancel behind it.
And that is something in the new act?
Because it has.
It's never really been enforced before.
No, this was something we had a couple of years ago.
Okay.
And they said, and we have done it before, and we have not done it. I don't know how much they've enforced, but they do recommend it so that a councilor can't come past it.
Well, this is a council decision, right?
Right.
Yeah, so it's a, so it gets voted on, so all councils.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, gotcha.
Good for you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Country-minded? Passed. So the next one's going to Municipal Services, okay. All right, thank you, sir. That's it for you?
Yes.
Okay, moving, good segue into the next one, which is Municipal Services. And your worship, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Municipal Service Committee met on, during the Committee of the Hall on January the fourteenth. Present were myself as Chair, Counselor Hayward Brumfield, Deputy Mayor Ella Wallace. The Mayor is Ex officio, staff included, C A O Nadine McCauley, Director of Engineering Randy Dillon, Superintendent Public Works Randy Chambers, Superintendent Water Sewer Keith Pye, and Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy, who took the minutes. Action items were reviewed and updates were noted. There were no errors or omissions in the previous minutes, and there were no delegations. In new business, we discussed several key items. Number one, damage of personal prop, a policy, a property policy, P W zero zero two two. The Committee will recommend small wording change to this policy, removing the requirement for advertising in local newspapers and TV ad channels, and instead adding the town website. This change, this change aims to streamline communications and bring more information more accessible to residents. Committee was in favor of bringing this amended policy forward. Spring cleanup policy, P W zero zero two six. Similar wording changes were made to this policy as well, aligning with the previous ma, uh, updates that were made in policy P W zero zero two two. Policy noted, the Committee agreed to bring the amended forward policy for approval. Uh, street lighting complaint, Counselor Compton-Hobbs forwarded a social media complaint about poor street lighting in certain areas of town. The Director of Engineering, Randy Dillon, noted that an audit of streetlights was completed a few years ago, which led to the town being overcharged and subsequently being reimbursed from Newfoundland-Labrador Highway for the overcharge. Uh, this ass, added also resulted in upgrades to four hundred watt L E D bulbs, and the installation of additional poles and lighting throughout the community. However, some areas still need upgrades. Uh, the Municipal Services Committee suggested issuing a public service announcement, inviting the community to identify poorly lit areas, which was done. I'm not sure what kind of response we got. As well, I should note that we met with Rick Kennedy last week. He's the Regional Manager of Transmission and Rural Operations with Newfoundland-Labrador Hydro. And so things are progressing on that front, and I hope we have an update for our next meeting. Uh, Mr. Dillon also reported water ponding issues at the leased property that currently houses the Town Depot on the north side. He noted that he plans to meet with the owner of the property to discuss how this affects the leasing agreement in place with the town. Staffing, staff is currently managing the issue, but a more permanent plan is needed to prevent future problems. Uh, Chief Administrative Officer Nadine, Nadine McCauley provided an update on the electric bus. Uh, she noted that quotes have been evaluated, purchase orders have been issued, and a charger has been installed at the old Town Depot. However, the bus is still quite some ways from being in operation. I'm not sure if we have a timeline on that or not. Committee acknowledged that there is a significant, that there is significant public interest in the project, and suggested forming a subcommittee to keep the project on track. Uh, Mr. Dillon also noted that he had been liaising with Municipal and Provincial Affairs regarding the appointment of consultants to better advance various infrastructure projects and initiatives throughout the community, and I believe there is a recommendation or two to that effect as well. With that, your worship, I move that the Municipal Services Committee report be accepted as read.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moved by Counselor Palmeroy that we accept the Municipal Services Report as presented. Seconded by? Okay, Deputy Mayor Wallace, discussion? None being heard?
Just, I don't know if there's an update from the C A O in terms of the, some of the.
Let's do the, accept the report first, then we can go into that.
Okay, because I wasn't sure if there was updates on these things.
Um, that, yeah. Um, so any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Country-minded? Passed. Okay, update wise, we're supposed to have a report update this week on the bus, is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Okay, can we get an update tonight here at the meeting, or? After the meeting, so we can't discuss in the public? Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay. Do we vote on that? Ah, it's been one of those days.
Keep it on track.
Yeah, I know. I get sorry checked real quick. Okay, Protective Services. Uh, no, do you have any?
Recommendation.
Yeah, you have a recommendation.
Okay, um, just bear with me a second here now.
On your separate sheet there.
Really smart change.
Number two there.
Okay. Four altogether, okay. Yep, thank you, Mayor. Municipal Service Committee recommends, okay, P W zero zero two two, damage of personal property. Municipal Services Committee recommends council approve policy P W zero two two, with amendments to include adding the town website as a form of advertising and removing local paper and television ad, Chad, ad channels.
Okay, moved by Counselor Palmeroy and the Municipal Service Committee that we recommend the, we accept the changes to P W zero zero two two, as noted. Seconded by Counselor Brumfield. Discussion? None heard. All those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Next one, please?
Um, P W zero zero two six, spring cleanup. Municipal Services Committee recommends council approve policy P W zero zero two six, with amendments to remove, quote, "local newspaper and local TV advertising channel as a form of advertising."
Okay, moved by Counselor Palmeroy and Municipal Service Committee that we approve policy zero, P W zero zero two six, with the noted amendments. Seconded by Deputy, Counsel, Counsel Brumfield, eh? Uh, Counsel Brumfield, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Next one, sir?
Loring Drive Reconstruction. Be it resolved that the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay wishes to engage harborside engineering consultants to provide a level of effort, price, and breakdown for the scope of work required to complete the engineering design work and supervision associated with the project, road construction, Loring Drive, one seven dash R N C dash two four dash zero 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 one one. Formal engagement of harborside engineering consultants through a prime consultant agreement will only occur if the pricing obtained for this service is considered fair and reasonable by the town and the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure.
Okay, it's moved by Counselor Palmeroy and Municipal Services that the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay engage harborside engineering consultants uh, to provide a level of effort, price, and breakdown for the scope of work required to complete the noted project. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Discussion? Deputy Mayor Wallace?
Um, with this one, obviously, it's good to see this one come through, because obviously the area is in dire straits and definitely needing repairs. Is it possible, I know I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Dillon, just to give an overview or a breakdown as to what we're actually asking and for what purpose?
Uh, yes, Counselor, Deputy Mayor. Uh, presently, harborside engineering consultants have a, have a contract to design supervised the road intersection upgrades, which involves installing new signals and upgrading the whole intersection. Uh, this would, we also have a project under a different program to upgrade and reconstruct Loring Drive. So where the two projects are contiguous to each other, rather than have interruptions in the construction and, and at different times of the summer, it would be best if they actually, and they're both paving projects, it would be best if that same consultant supervised and designed and called in one tender the work for those two projects. So I think it would make it more efficient, and I think it would better, be better traffic-wise and, and the overall construction, I think, would flow better.
Brilliant, thanks, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. You have one more?
Yes, sir, um. Municipal Arena Heating Upgrades. Municipal Services Committee recommends that a contract for the municipal reading, municipal arena heating upgrades be awarded to Switch Electrical in the amount of thirty seven thousand four hundred and forty six dollars, subject to the approval of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure.
Okay, moved by Counselor Palmeroy and Municipal Service Committee that we award a contract for arena heating upgrades to Switch Electrical, the amount of thirty seven thousand four hundred and forty six dollars. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Discussion? Or seconded, sir? Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Indicate with aye.
Aye.
All right.
Sorry.
Now I got you. Okay, um, just one question on that. Has there ever been any thought of us hiring an electrician?
Yep.
I mean, I know, like, this particular issue has, I mean, we've spent a lot of money.
I can, I can tell you that one when you're, so we did at one point, Mayor, previously look at that, but it became, came down to a, a union issue of having an electrician with being paid such a high level of pay, with something around those lines. Because you were, you hire an electrician, you're not getting an electrician that would fall within the collective agreement.
But is there a collective agreement about in the, like, for electrician?
You can't.
There's not? Can we enter one in there?
We tried.
The intent was that the position would be non-unionized.
Yeah. But that was.
But can we, can we change the intent to talk to the union to see if it's possible to add a, I mean, we're not getting an electrician for twenty five bucks an hour, but I mean, a corresponding rate for electricians? Is there any discussion about that? Because I mean, we, we spend a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
On specifically heating and electrical upgrades and et cetera.
Yep.
Can we get an update from Randy, the engineer, on what, what this thirty seven thousand is going for?
This will upgrade the, the panels so that each individual section will be operated with basically a radio knob. Right now, it's either all on or all off for those particular sections, and people get either, either too cold or too hot. Then if too hot, the ice is affected. So what this will do, you will be able to dial up or down, dial down the actual heat in that particular section.
Okay, so it's by section and not by heater? Because there's like sixteen heaters in four sections, right?
It's by heater in each section. So each section would have its own radio control knob.
So we're getting thermostats.
Yeah, it's, it's not a thermostat, because that is not something that you can thermostatically easily control. So if you manually control it, you, you won't have to have it full on, you can have half on.
So it's still by section and not by heater?
Still by section, exactly.
Remember years ago, I went to an arena with kids' figure skating, and you could rent heat. It was a gas, gas, you know, natural gas kind of heating, and there was a meter behind that you paid with.
Love it.
Cash or credit card, so.
But we still keep the old heaters there then, aren't we? Are they being replaced?
They were replaced, not that long.
The, the heaters were replaced. So we do have new heaters, but this will give better control of the heaters that are there.
Anyway, so I just, I, because like I say, we, we spent a lot of money, and not just electrical, I mean, maybe it could be a multi-trade thing or something. But anyway, all right, so that, that's done. Next committee then, moving along, you're finished, yes. Next committee is Protective Services.
Okay.
And your worship again, sir?
All right, I'll, Mayor indicated, Counselor Compton-Hobbs sent her regrets today, and I've been tasked to try and do a report on her behalf. So the Protective Services Committee met on January the fourteenth during Committee of the Hall. Present, present were Chair, Counselor Compton-Hobbs, myself, Counselor Bert Palmeroy, Counselor Denise Rumbold, Mayor George Andrews as Ex officio. Should note that he had left the meeting at six forty three P M for other purposes, so he was therefore portioned of the meeting. Uh, C A O Nadine McCauley, D P S, Director of Public Protective Services, Brad Butler, and E A Kathy Eddy. Mayor called the, the meeting to order. There were no delegations. Committee reviewed the minutes with no errors or omissions. The action items were reviewed and updates were noted. In our new business, P S zero 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 one, accident report. Policy was enclosed, noting small clerical changes to update position titles. Committee was in favor of bringing in the amended policy forward to this meeting tonight. Also, policy P S zero 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 two, personal protective equipment. Policy was enclosed to, in the package, noting the addition of regulations to item number one, referencing the Occupational Health and Safety Act. Council was in favor of bringing the amended policy forward. Also, policy zero 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 three, animal control. Policy was enclosed, noting small clerical changes to update position titles, as well as the addition of reporting complaints using access E eleven. Committee, Committee was again in favor of bringing this amended policy forward. Again, another policy, P S zero 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 five, uniforms. Policy was enclosed, and recommendation was to rescind this policy as it is followed under the collective agreement under Article twenty three point five. Again, Committee was in favor of bringing this forward. Uh, policy F, or P S zero 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 eight, video surveillance cameras. Policy was enclosed, noting small clerical changes to update position titles. Committee was in favor of bringing this amendment forward. Uh, street lighting complaint, that was dealt with in Municipal Services. Other businesses with respect to firework regulations, Counselor Rumbold spoke of the number of complaints about excess, excessive fireworks on New Year's Eve. Fireworks start early in the evening and continued well until well after one A M the next morning. A permit system for fireworks is in place, however, there are two dates that do not require a permit, that would be New Year's Eve and Canada Day. Fireworks is encompassed, encompassed in the Noise and Nuisance Regulations, which states fireworks are permitted without a permit between four and eleven P M on Canada Day, and between four P M and one A M on New Year's Day. As well, with a permit, fireworks are permitted any day between the hours of four and eleven P M. Counselor Rumbold went on to say that the regulations say no person shall operate a lawnmower, chainsaw, et cetera, between nine P M and eight A M, but are allowing fireworks until eleven P M. She suggested reviewing the Noise and Nuisance Regulations, specifically regarding timeframes for fireworks. Committee asked that Chief Butler review the regu, regulations, pair them with other municipalities, and bring back more information. Committee asked that Chief Butler review the regu- regulations, pair them with other municipalities, and bring back more information on how to proceed. Uh, with that, your worship, I put forward our Protective Services Committee as ready.
Alright, thank you, uh councillor Palmeroy. So it's moved by councillor Palmeroy that we accept the Protective Services Committee as presented. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Uh, discussion? Yeah, I just have one comment in terms of the firework process. Um, I, I mean, even if we had permits on firework nights, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, the ones we don't permit now, the permits would, you know, it'd be a hundred permits or two hundred permits kind of deal, right? Uh, and I understand the reason people want to celebrate at twelve o'clock in the evening, so, uh, I'm not sure how we can get around that. Except totally remove fireworks, which I'm not sure if that'll, if that'll happen or that discussion takes place.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear it's like everybody else. I mean, as much as we like fireworks, or people like fireworks, uh, you know, I think it becomes a bit excessive at times, and, uh, noticing lately that, uh, we're seeing more that are happening without permits, and I would hope that if they're reported, that they're acted upon, because it's not easy to find out where they were, and because the leftovers is there on the ground, so, uh, but it is a serious issue in some areas, and, and, uh, but you know, it's not one that we can deal with easily.
Oh.
And, uh, hopefully the, uh, fire chief can come back with some recommendations that could help, help this issue.
Look in that other communities for sure. Any other discussion? Okay, none being heard. All those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Alright, so you have some recommendations as well?
Yes, sir, uh, P S zero 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 one, accident report. Protective Services Committee recommends council-approved policy, P S zero 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 one, with small clerical changes to update position titles.
Okay, moved by councillor Palmeroy and by Protective Services Committee, that council-approved policy, P S zero 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 one, with some small clerical changes. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Discussion? Okay, none heard. All those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Next one, please?
Protective Services Committee recommends council-approved policy, P S zero 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 two, with the addition of quote regulations uh to item number one, referencing the oper- uh Occupational Health and Safety Act.
Okay, uh, moved by councillor Palmeroy and Protective Services Committee, that, uh, council-approved policy, P S zero 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 two, with the addition of regulations. Uh, seconded by councillor Brumfield. Uh, discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Next one, please?
Protective Services Committee recommends council-approved policy, P S zero 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 three, noting small clerical changes to update position titles, as well as the addition of reporting complaints using access E eleven.
Okay, uh, moved by councillor Palmeroy and Protective Services Committee, that council-approved policy, P S zero 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 three, and noting some small clerical changes. Seconded by councillor Brumfield. Um, discussion? All those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Next one, please?
Protective Services Committee recommends council rescind the policy, P S zero 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 five, as the policy is followed under the collective agreement under Article twenty-three point five.
Okay, moved by councillor Palmeroy and Protective Services Committee, that council-approved policy, P S zero 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 five, as it follows under the collective agreement. Seconded by councillor Brumfield. Thank you, sir. Uh, discussion? Councillor, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Um, could you remind me, I can't remember, like, saying council rescind this policy? Why are we rescinding this?
Because it's no longer applicable.
It's under the collective agreement.
It's already covered under the collective agreement, so the policy's, policy's no longer applicable.
Okay.
So it has to be rescinded.
So we don't have to, right? Can't supersede the collective agreement?
Yeah, true.
Yep. Um, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. Next one, sir?
Protective Services Committee recommends council-approved policy, P S zero 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 eight, with small clerical changes to update position titles.
Okay, uh, moved by councillor Palmeroy and P S Committee, that council-approved, uh, policy, P S zero 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 eight, with some just small clerical changes. Seconded by councillor Brumfield. Uh, discussion? It's just good to see that, uh, we're just cleaning up some of the, uh, the old language in it, so it's, uh, that's good. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded? Passed. And that is the last of the committees. So we'll move into approval of checks.
Okay, thank you, your worship. The Finance Administration of Policy Committee recommends council-approved checks for the month of January twenty-twenty-five, totaling one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-three cents.
Okay, it, uh, is moved by councillor, uh, Brumfield and the Finance Committee that we approve checks for January in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Discussion?
I just got one question.
Yep.
Um, check, uh, two eight four seven zero, harborside transportation consultants. Is that in relation to the motion that came forward tonight, or is that a different work that you're doing?
That would be for a council, that would be for the road intersection upgrades project?
Okay, it's just a combined, or the other, yeah, okay, gotcha.
That's what we're trying to combine with the, with the reconstruction.
Perfect, gotcha.
Good, good. Councillor, uh, Brumfield?
Yeah, we have a check here for twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents, two eight four nine seven.
Yeah.
For Northern Labrador Services. First time I've heard of them. What do they do?
They're a company that does all the firefighting stuff, Northern Labrador Services? Yeah, as far as I know.
Can we?
Yeah, they're a local company.
Northern Labrador Services?
Yeah.
Do we, do we?
It's a home-based business that I believe is on, I asked this question before, but, um, the check is, the checks are there. But I think he does firefighting.
Do we go to tender for that? Do we, do we go if an R, issue an R F P for those types of services?
Not sure. I think it's, uh, the volunteer fire department. I don't know if it's a combination or what.
Twenty-eight grand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he may have, we're just paying him, I don't know. But I think that name's come up before, and we've asked similar question.
Yeah, I've never heard it.
Yeah. Yeah, the gentleman lives over on Mitchell or Paddle somewhere.
Yeah, I never ever heard of it either.
Oh, yeah.
He's registered, aren't they?
He is registered, yes, because we asked last time and he wasn't, and he is now.
Yeah.
Yep. If that's the one I'm.
Industrial equipment supplier.
Yeah, that's him.
So.
And he does a lot of firefighting. The firefighter, the fire, uh, department stuff comes through him.
So he, he's registered business?
Yeah, he is, good, cause then when the name come up a few times before, we asked, and he wasn't, but he since has become registered.
Okay, cause I don't recall that ever coming to a committee or for council.
Oh, he's been on to go for years. Yep.
So we just order direct? We don't offer an R F P for industrial supplies?
Not sure. Don't know what the payment's for. Don't know what was ordered.
It's been poised to install, uh, a fourteen-foot snow pusher, if it does six forty-four K longer.
Okay.
Longer, longer, sorry. It says logging to that, so. It's a snowflake.
Okay.
So why would we sole-source that? There's, there's some people down to probably provide those.
It doesn't say we sole-source.
What was her, the R F P or tender or anything like that? We know of?
Probably not for twenty-four thousand. There was probably just three quotes requested.
Yeah, you wouldn't have.
We, we don't have to vote tender for that amount.
You get three quotes.
You get your quotes and go.
You get your quotes.
Yeah.
So we had three quotes, and that would have been the lowest. That would have been the lowest quote?
Yeah, monthly for.
That meets specs, yeah.
Sooner, take it to pass.
Yeah. Uh, so any other questions on the checks? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
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 Country-minded, uh, country-minded? Okay, we've approved the checks. I'm going to the phone tonight first. She's not looking at me from across the seat, so. Councillor Rumbo, councillor forum?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I really, this is gonna be my shortest councillor forum ever, because, um, when I'm not there in chamber and with the technical side of things and with the volume, I'm just, I really don't think that I'll take advantage of my councillor forum tonight, but I do want to take a moment to say, um, how much I appreciate um, the technology and the ability to be able to engage in a meeting, to take part, to listen. I'm actually in Ottawa right now, sitting in front of my window, watching skaters on the Rideau Canal, while I hear about, you know, the rink in Goose Bay that's, um, getting ready for use or just been open for use. So the remote attendance, um, ability, I'm very thankful for, um, and I, uh, I look forward to being in person at our next meeting, so thank you very much.
You know our rink is better though, right?
Maybe not as long, but I'm sure it's.
It depends on how many times we're all around.
It'll last longer. Okay, thank you, uh, councillor, uh, Rumbold. And, yeah, I've attended several meetings. Um, it would be nice if the technology was similar to M S Teams, if we could improve it so that you could actually be seen, you could be on split screen or something. But, yeah, no, it is good. Uh, councillor Palmero?
Alright, uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, just want to talk a little bit about Committee of the Hall and, uh, and my thoughts on that. Um, so, I mean, I, I, I think the approach of a Committee of the Hall can offer certain efficiencies, and, uh, but I'm a little concerned as we move forward and some of the drawbacks of that, uh, based on experience, uh, you know, I think it can be difficult at times to focus on specific topics during Committee of the Hall. In a standalone committee, members can have, uh, more time and more thorough discussions and offer solutions and directions to staff. Um, the C I O, uh, Committee of the Hall structure limits discussion on important issues. Uh, the agenda in the Committee of the Hall, uh, tends to be overloaded with a different variety of proj- uh, topics. Some that may not interest some, uh, councillors that are not serving on those particular committees. Therefore, their, the engagement level is not as much. Um, often results in, uh, important issues being rushed or adequately addressed, and, uh, which can impede our ability to make informed decisions, in my opinion. Uh, it's also worth noting that while our last Committee of the Hall meeting ran relatively smooth, it was largely due to the fact that there weren't a lot of issues on the table, and that, that's, that's, we can see that tonight. Uh, representative here tonight, we had our committee, our council meeting is actually ending within an hour. So there was very little discussion in Committee of the Hall, very little discussion tonight. Uh, and as we move along, I fear that that's probably gonna, we're gonna be working a lot, long hours on two nights a month, instead of spreading it out over a period of time. Um, I think it's important that we, uh, strike a balance that allows for efficient decision-making, while ensuring each issue receives a focused uh, attention that it does deserve, and, um, revisiting a standalone committee model, or perhaps a hybrid approach at some point, uh, could provide a more effective framework, uh, for councils to be able to make informed decisions. Um, and another note, I think that is important, uh, for me anyway, as a councillor and, uh, councils a whole, to adopt a collaborative approach to ensuring our community, uh, thrives economically by, uh, being well-prepared to manage the social impacts that future hydro developments will have on our community. Uh, it's important we engage in meaningful dialogue with all stakeholders, including residents, indigenous communities, business leaders, developers, provincial government, Newfoundland-Labrador Hydro. Uh, by fostering an environment of open communication and cooperation, we can identify and address potential challenges early on, ensuring that the needs and concerns of our community are considered at every stage of the development. That's something that did not happen with Muscat Falls. We were kind of like left out of the equation altogether, and now we're seeing the consequences of that. I don't want to be in a situation four, five, ten years down the road where we're faced in an even worse situation than we are today. We want to come out of, uh, uh, these developments being somewhat revitalized. We don't want to be traumatized, which is what we're, we ended up being. So economic prosperity and social well-being are not mutually exclusive. Uh, we need to priorit- prioritize initiatives that promote sustainable economic growth, while investing in infrastructure, social services, and community programs. Uh, by working together with stakeholders, we can create a comprehensive plan that balances economic opportunities with social and environmental considerations unique to our community and to our region. Um, and, uh, I guess moreover, you know, it's essential that we advocate as a town, as a council, for transparency, transparency and accountability in planning and execution of this. We need to be a part of the discussion. We need to be part of the solutions that, that can deal with the issues that are gonna come, and I guess it, uh, you know, we've been told that we're, you know, mistakes of the past will not be repeated. Well, you know, we have to hold people accountable to that, and, uh, you know, show us the money, premier. If we're gonna, we need, we need some real action happening in our community to help us deal with this project as it, as it comes down the road, so that we're not traumatized at the end, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Brumfield?
Uh, thank you, your worship. I'm gonna keep it short, as usual. One thing I'd like to say so far this year, knock on wood, are snow, lack of. Some people think it's good, some people think it's not good. I'm in the category, I don't think it's good anymore. Cause the simple fact is, come the spring, if we don't get a whole lot of snow, we're gonna be in trouble. The spring, be fires everywhere. Flipped side, that is per se, and a lot of money, I tell you, on fuel and overtime, which is a bonus for this town, so. Keep it up, I guess. The only major item I see, I think, but this council, we had to do, not necessarily this council, but the next council for sure, with new churchill contract. I think we gotta start to get something out of this, more than what we got on the Muscat Falls. I think we had gotta have a coherent discussion on what we're looking for. Like, we got a provincial election coming up real soon, the federal one coming up real soon. We should be pushing these politicians for what we want. One thing I think we should get, which would be real cheap for this town, just put a, a right turning lane on Loi- uh, Voisey Drive, come out of the school. And thus, all aheads, thank you.
Uh, there you go. There's lots of time to get into the race, too. Councillor, uh, Winters?
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of things, uh, basically, uh, condolences to the family of and friends of Clara Miles Myers. Uh, Clara was one of the janitors at P I Academy and another school, and she probably knew pretty much every youth in town. Um, she's very well-liked and such a beautiful person, so just wanted to send condolences to her family and friends. And yes, I, I agree with everybody around the table when it comes to the Muscat, or, uh, sorry, the upcoming hydro development. And, and if it happens, I mean, right now, we're not even at the M O U stage, so, um, yeah, I, I just think we just need to get our, uh, our list together of what we want, and I did start putting together something, I, I showed it to other councillors, and I'll send, I'll send it to the rest of the council, and basically, it's every need that I think that we, we deserve, uh, from, from this development. I mean, we were the ones that were left out of lower churchill as well, or up churchill as well, and lower churchill, I mean, we were just left out of the, left in the wind, so. I think if we can put together a comprehensive list of what, what our needs are, um, then, then move forward. And like, like councillor Brumfield said, there's elections coming up, and let's, let's make them, make, make the promises and, and, and hold them to the ground. And basically, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. It's been a, a quiet month on the front of, uh, events happening. It's, um, not that there hasn't been meetings and, uh, luncheons and fireside chats happening. Today was one, for example, the state-of-the-wing ad- uh, address with Colonel Sejan. He will be leaving, uh, our area come this summer, but we'd like to thank him for everything he has done. Really has bring the base to a community level, the access for us to get onto the base and to feel as a whole that we are, um, welcome and as one. He, um, certainly helped with a lot of associations we were even discussing today, one of which was a soccer, enabling, uh, the kids to play on the base. Um, so it was a good meeting today with, uh, like minds, discussing M O U, if that happens. Then that's something we have to put a big ask in. Um, coming together with the Chamber of Commerce, I know there's many meetings happening um, with the L N C C and, uh, stakeholders and, uh, members of that group, one of which is next Monday. There's a fireside chat with representatives from Hydro to give information on the M O U itself. So I encourage everyone to come out to that one, of course, and, and discussing as to what our big ask is for, um, for the town. Um, councillor Winters, you mentioned, um, what you, your, what you put together. I think it's a brilliant list, and I think it will be a list this time around, for sure. Other than that, I'm good.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, just want to, uh, I made, uh, note that, uh, no, it's the C I O who told me. Uh, she's gonna hold it up again here first, so I can see it. Uh, our skating loop is open. It's open from eight, eleven A M to eight P M. Helmets are required, no sticks or pucks, and of course, use. And of course, use it at your own risk, but use it smartly and very safely. And, what? I'm getting all kinds of signs. Oh, yes, indeed. Uh, and it is absolutely stellar. And thank you to our staff, uh, for, for doing that. Hopefully, Mother Nature will continue with some cold and not so much sun because it'll eat away our, our loop. Okay, so, uh, just a couple of quick things, um, we're expecting from, uh, our C A O, uh, a busing update. And I mean, as I, uh, sat on C B C. The other morning, um, we have lost a staff member, uh, whose file was predominantly his file. Uh, so we're in the process, uh, we're a little bit behind guaranteed, but we're in the process of looking at evaluating different, uh, I guess, payment systems and or, uh, ways to, uh, to be able to use that part of the, the bus. So, uh, we are continuing to work on it, uh, and hopefully we're supposed to have an update, uh, this week that will be put out to, to the public. Um, want to say thank you to our fire department for a very quick response and a successful response to a fire at the Labrador Inn. Um, you know, when you see hoses breaking and things like that, uh, with the cold and that, uh, just, uh, I don't envy those guys, but, uh, very much appreciate the efforts that Brad and his, uh, his group and our staff, uh, who were involved in that, uh, did. Um, we did have a meeting with Hydro as was alluded to a little earlier in response to, um, the, uh, video that was produced and circulated on social media about some, uh, lighting issues and challenges in town. Uh, we've since followed up with the P S A. Asking residents to, uh, to call in and identify areas of, uh, uh, the town that they feel is, are really dark, uh, and or if there's lights out. Uh, Hydro doesn't do a regular sweep of their lighting system. They rely on, uh, community partners like us and, uh, businesses and individuals to indicate, uh, that there are outages or whether bulbs are blown or streetlights are not illuminated. So, uh, we'll, uh, we'll hopefully, uh, get some response and Hydro's made the commitment that they will, uh, act on whatever we want, uh, very quickly. Um, wondering if we have an update on hiring? Do we, are we successful? Was that interviews this week? C P D was? Are they done? Are we? It's good? Okay, I'm getting a s- something later. Okay, closed session. All right, and, uh, outside of that, yeah, like, um, I remember the last time a senior vice president with, uh, with Hydro, or with, uh, the project, uh, would always say to us as council that, uh, it was a project that was not going to have an impact on our community. Uh, we know that's, uh, absolutely as far from the truth as we could, uh, we could imagine. And, uh, as paramount this time that we do ensure that we put ourselves in the best position that we can. And I don't think, uh, you know, that's a quick, uh, fix, but I think that, uh, you know, for two hundred and twenty-five billion dollar project over the life of the contract, uh, over the life of the agreement and more, um, I think that it's imperative that, uh, yeah, we be considered. Uh, there's been some, you know, promise to that effect that, uh, the, uh, the past won't be relived. Uh, commitment is not good enough, in my opinion. Commitment's just, uh, words and words can get quickly forgotten or whatever, so. There is some work, uh, being done already, uh, behind, uh, the scenes by community partners. And, uh, council will have discussion, uh, about that and, uh, moving forward, how important it is, because we, you're not going to get this. We're lucky to get it the second time, but we're not going to get it the third time, so. Uh, anyway, that work is, uh, continuing and is important work and, uh, we'll, uh, we're on it, so. Outside of that, anything from, you could have done the, uh, the announcement on the, uh, skating thing yourself, sure? Oh, okay. Um, ending from you? Mister Dillon?
I.
One sec, though. Nope, just let Randy first and then come back to you.
Uh, no, Mayor, thank you. Uh, I just want to provide a, an update on the lighting. I know that there are a number of outages that are, have been referred to Hydro for, uh, for, uh, for, for correction. And as well, the three lights up around Terry's tent, um, start and end, and, and the co-op have also been referred to, uh, to Hydro. And I know our engineering technician and the Hydro technician will be looking at that tomorrow, so.
And that's what he said. That's what he said. Once we indicated things, I'm just gonna go to Kathy first and then I'll come back to you.
I, I just want to mention quickly, but I seen Hydro today, actually, I paused today.
Yeah, well, he said that they would have their technician with our group and they will be on it right away.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Putting up a light, right?
Yeah, they're probably doing the, the putting up the new la- or, uh, putting up the new lights, the, the ones that are out. But I know that our technician and their technician will be looking at the new installations on Hamilton River Road tomorrow.
Yeah, and I urge anyone listening, I do believe we're still live. Um, yeah, too, if you have something, call in. For next, uh, committee of the hall meeting, can we have a breakdown? Because some people have asked me a couple of times over the last number of days and it's just come to my mind. Um, to explain the access E one one system and what and how people can do it. And maybe if it's a ten-minute, uh, our meeting should be, uh, they're, they're, they're live and then it can come into the council meeting or prepare something. And then for next month's council meeting, that five minutes or ten minutes before our council meeting, we can do that E one one. So people, uh, who have a complaint or issue. Yeah, and explain the system. Kathy?
Uh, I just want to pass on condolences to the family, Clara Myers as well. Um, Clara was a Boulder, uh, municipal electioneering many years. Um, always very eager, shares the knowledge, helps the local clerks, you know, with their paid work and stuff, and, uh, so they'll be certain election come up, not to over, so.
So I, I'm not sure if you've heard that from Kathy, but, um, Mrs. Myers, uh, was an active, um, person involved in our poll clerk and poll captains for our, our elections. So, uh, we thank that. So, yeah, that's definitely a devincing family, uh, from, uh, from all of us here at the town. And with that, I am going to, anything else before close? No, they're good. All right, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
I was gonna say it was you anyway, but, okay, moved by Council Rumbold to adjourn. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. All those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye.